Last meeting, Tom, was the third draft, right? So if you go to the third page where it says addition, about a third of the way down, it says additions to the third revenue draft budget at 4-9-19 BOE meeting. That's where we pick off, pick up from our last budget discussion. So, Tom, I'm going to let you just go right through the list and explain what's there, why it's there, and if board members have any questions about it, this would be a good time to ask those questions.
So, there's a couple of different components of this, so some questions may get answered as we go along because you might be kind of surprised a little bit by the additions we were able to add and where did that all come from. Let me explain it to you. So, the first thing I want to talk about is we got our new state aid runs based on the budget that was approved on April 1st or whatever, and it produced a short of $12,000 more dollars. Most of that was in foundation aid, but there were some other changes, too. And one of the things that got changed was our building aid. Our building aid got changed. So, building aid changed. Building aid is also a big part of the tax cap, the calculation for that, and I'll get to that one because that created some more money. So, we did receive more money in the basic formula, which is mostly foundation aid, but it's also building aid, transportation aid, there's a bunch of aids all rolled up into basic aid. Excess cost aid actually went down a little bit. Our BOSI's aid went up a little bit, which was kind of nice to see, and our textbook, software, and library went up a little bit, so $11,857. So, but what I had to do, though, was because there was a change in building aid, I went to the tax levy limit, okay? So, if we go to this document.
What's the number on it?
It's 6.2.2, or it should be in the second document that was maybe the third document.
Yeah, that's the old numbering.
This is, yeah, the old number, this one does it. So, it should be in front of you. If you go through it, you'll see at the top it says tax levy limit is the second line down, so you should be able to hopefully pick up on that one. So, I'm not going to go through all the calculations in that before, but the whole front side of this, there's no change to it. That was the calculations, nothing changed with that. But if we turn it over to the second side and on the backside of the second page, on the left-hand side, the second bit number there is capital local expenditures. So, when I went back into that formula to take a look at it, I noticed I had transposed a number and said, oh, I saw the error, but I didn't know if it was to the good or the bad, so I was a little worried. So, I put it in and it was to the good. It freed up quite a bit of money. I don't remember the number off the top of my head, but it was somewhere near like $70,000.
Which numbers were transposed?
It's that, well, you can't see it here, it's a formula. It was a transposition inside the formula, and I happened to transpose a number, my beginning number, which freed up the money, which was good, but that brought us up to 3.64%. So, it was almost a quarter of a percent higher. So, like I said, it was about $70,000. So, 70,000 times four is about 280,000, which is 1%, so, yes. So, we found a quarter of a percent there, and that was strictly, I, the formula, I transposed a number in my formula there. So, corrected that, so we were able to come up with about an additional $70,000, $75,000. So, lo and behold, we were able to address some of those additions. We went over this in finance committee. I know we've seen it throughout here, and also tonight you should be accepting a retirement, so I put in a simple computation in there to offset those challenges. So, in the additions to the third draft, and I also, in front of you, there is a one-pager in here that was just a listing of all the considerations we had. And what I tried to do was kind of put it in this, not in the same order, but we did change the account name, so instead of the first one being salary, nine through 12, it's sealed by literacy. So, adding that in for an additional $3,000. The arts and education.
Hang on a second. I just want to make sure everybody's in the same, and I'm looking around and I'm seeing that people aren't. So, we're looking at the third page of the document that we started with.
Additions and additions, yeah.
Which says additions to the third revenue draft budget at.
Right.
And then additions to the third draft budget at 4-9-19. This one's revenue, no, we're not on that, we're on this.
Well, they're both of them, you can reference both of them.
I know, but I want to make sure if you're working off this one, we don't have people looking at a different document because then there will be confusion, so.
So, the second one is arts and education, additional $5,000. Remember, the following year, we get half, approximately half of that back in BOSI's aid. We also had an alternative high school placement that just came to us, so we had to put that one on there. Unfortunately, or fortunately, I wanted to say, we already transport there, so there was no transportation additional, so it's just the tuition.
That's to BOSI's aid.
That's the, yeah, that's right. The next one is the JAMP software. This will help with loading of, on computer carts and laptop carts for iPads, Macs, and the whole Apple line of things to be able to be updated at one time instead of going computer by computer by computer. So, this will create a lot of efficiencies.
And that's also reducing costs because it's through BOSI's, right?
And that is the plan.
Yes, okay. It goes from 16,550 to 13,050 to 13,703.
Correct. Yeah, we are going to purchase that through BOSI's. We find out, we can purchase it through there, and we hope that maybe the price will come down.
Yeah.
We don't expect it to go up, though. Navion software for the guidance office, $6,700. Once again, we get about half of that back the following year and then subsequent years as we go forward. We're also looking at sustainability throughout this process. And another addition we had to put in was for the health insurance for the guidance aid who is retiring, so this would be for the replacement person. And also, the last one there is providing transportation for field hockey to Pine Plains.
Tom, before you go on, going back to the guidance aid health insurance, that number is the total number for that one, right?
They're all totals. The difference is just being.
Right. No, I just wanted to make sure that that was clear because I was talking about it just in terms of.
Yes, one family EPO 20 plan.
Okay.
Yes. And if, so that was an additional of just over $85,000. And if we go over to the next page, just, there is a decrease, once again, going back to that same retirement, looking to reduce the salary by approximately $14,500 out of the budget. So, we're looking at total changes in this proposed, changes to, from draft three to draft four, of $70,650. It is a total budget of just over $35 million, $4,961, which is a budget budget of 3.2%. The tax levy is 3.63%, and our maximum level is 3.64. So, we're under the tax cap this year by $2,811. So, under, not right at, but, you know, I think, so, do anybody have questions?
Jack. Steve, alternative high school placement, is that for one student?
Uh huh, yes. Yes.
Any other questions?
So, the, putting the field hockey transportation here, that means we would be considering going forward with a merge program, is that?
That's, under that assumption, yes. Again, I want to point out, this is more for people watching this at home than for all of you, because I know I sound like a broken record every year saying this, but when the board adopts a budget and when people vote on the budget, they're voting for a bottom-line number. There are things that could happen between now and the end of the school year, now and the middle of summer, now and the beginning of the school year. We could have kids come in, we could have kids go out. I'm not saying that the specific thing you brought up is likely to change, although they haven't given us a final number of that, so it's an estimate on our part, but that additional transportation assumes that.
But it, I mean, yes, I agree with what you're saying, but it would mean then, even if the numbers change, that there probably wouldn't be a field hockey team here because we've now taken the money.
We don't have enough kids for our own.
Right, but if they were to like come out of the woodwork, it would have to come from somewhere else, the money, because we've taken it out.
The money for coaching field hockey was not taken out.
That was already in the budget.
Do not know what the fee or whether or not we need to provide a coach to Pine Plains at this time. So, the money is there in the budget if we need to provide the coach.
Right.
Or unless we need to pay half of Pine Plains' coaching salary. We don't know yet, that has not been reached yet.
And if we don't spend it, then we don't spend it, but it's there in case we need it under that scenario.
Okay.
Yep.
Come up with another sport. Any other questions?
I would ask, well, I don't want to cut off questions, of course, but before we kind of wrap this up, I just want Tom to take a couple of minutes to go through the revenue side of this because, as you all know, there's an expenditure side, there's a revenue side, so, but I don't want to cut off any questions on what you've set up to this point.
No others? Can we move on to revenue?
Okay. So, Tom, I just want you to give us a review of this, you don't have to go through it line by line, but highlight.
I'll hit the highlight.
Yes, thank you.
The first one, of course, is the biggest number of all, and this is your real property taxes. You see that going up 3.63%, a little under $1,050,000. The payments in lieu of taxes, this is for just across the way, and this is, I can't remember how many more years, but we've got quite a form.
You're talking about over at.
Brookmead.
Yeah, Brookmead, right. That's correct.
So, this is payment from there, and every year this ramps up. Likewise, it's a part of your tax cap figures, too. One of the better thing, well, I don't want to say better, but one thing is we went along in the budget process, we see charges for services, non-resident tuition. We do have, and one of the things I did earlier in the process, was I realized that as I was going through the special education area, that one of the children that we are providing services for is actually a foster child from another school district, and I can bill him back for that. So, this is an offset to their, to our expense. It's an offset that will bill to them, so it washes out. So, there's a revenue on the one side, but there's also an expense, but it washes itself out. The other area, which has been very good, and we're really elected to see it, but it seems as though right now it's plateauing, is that interest in earnings. We were able to add an additional $70,000 to our interest earnings this year, and we hope to, I know we're going to eclipse it this year and hope as we go forward, we continue to do that, and hopefully this is an area we could continue to expand upon as revenues. Always nice to see revenues go up, just making sure that you get them. In the next session, sale of property, insurance recoveries, it's just a number, we haven't quite been reaching the $25,000, so I reduced that to $20,000. Some years we do reach it, but in the past few years, we've been funding a little bit short, so this is a little precaution. The second part, miscellaneous, the big one there, refund of BOSI's aid services. I know BOSI's came and gave their presentation. Remember, this is the money. BOSI's is not allowed to have a fund balance, so at the end of the year, and this is done by, they're called coasters, they don't call them budget coasters, they're coasters by coasters. They look at every single one and they say, well, and it can be a plus or a negative. They will look at a program and say, they spent this much money in the program, $1 million? We collected $1.1 million from all the school districts. We're going to refund $100,000. But it can go the reverse, too, and they said, ah, we shorted ourselves, now we're going to collect that $100,000. But over the years, it's been averaging anywhere from $80,000 to about $120,000, so return, so, so a budget for 100, usually we're pretty good at that. This year was 117.
And they return any over to the district proportionally, and what do they use to do that?
They use with Arlata, that great, that's resonated attendance. So, they look at your entire school district, how many kids do we have in our school district compared to the other ones? But it gets weighted by the type of student. Special education gets an extra weighting to it, and things of that nature, so that plays a factor into it. But pretty much our special education numbers are kind of the same across the county as a percentage. It's not like we're really far under what everybody else is, but we are under. Refund of prior expenses, once again, that's a lot of like expenses that come back to us that we paid out this year, but refunded the following year. Miscellaneous revenues that we have come in, if we flip over to the next page, our state aid. If you look at our state aid, it overall has gone up only $24,000. Now, there's a little bit of an offset to this, okay? We had a reduction in our building aid because we had some building aid come off. It wasn't humongous, but it was about $50,000. So, really, we received about $75,000 more in state aid overall over the previous year. Some of it were aid-driven types of things. You see, BOSI's aid is down, but transportation aid is up. There's some other aids that are up, too, small ones, but they do add up after a little bit. We got more foundation aid, I think, the entire process, I think we received about $30,000 in additional new foundation aid. So, an increase of about $24,000. The next one is federal aids. We do Medicaid reimbursements. We just run through the Office of Special Programs led by Emily Davidson, and this is a refund of our students who are Medicare eligible, and we provide medical services for them.
Medicaid eligible.
What's that?
Medicaid eligible?
Yes, yeah, Medicaid, not Medicaid eligible, not Medicare, sorry. And then in the next session, inter-fund transfers. This is, in some cases, helps to offset or reduce our taxes. The first one is air fund transfer to debt service. Now, this is from the debt service from the 2006 project, the $24 million project. At that time, we were earning 4% and 5% interest rates, so we, at the end of that project, had about $1 million left over in funds. And the only thing you can do is use those money to reduce that debt, okay? So, we've been applying it against that debt, but I just want to let you know, we were able to do it for 120, we've gone to 180, we're slowly having to wean ourselves off as we're under like $300,000, so we'll be able to maybe do an 80 or 60, 60, 40, 40, 20, 20, and it will be gone. So, that is slowly running itself out. But, once again, we have a new project and we are now starting to earn some more interest there, so we'll start to see that ramp up. And the second part, or the second one, appropriated fund balance, that's using our monies, in our fund balance, to reduce the levy overall. We've been, over the years, have now gotten it down to $850,000. So, when I'm putting a budget together, I'm trying to make sure between the revenues and the expenditures, I get a delta of at least $850,000. If I get that, our fund balance remains the same. If we get more revenues, then our fund balance starts to go up. If we get more expenditures, our fund balance starts to go down. So, my aim is to make sure that there is a delta of at least 850. That number got way too high, and it was hard to meet. So, it's been nice to get that. We're almost to the point where 750 is probably where I want it to do, but I think maybe next year, maybe only $50,000 to slow that down, or depending on how our fund balance is at the end of this year, we may have different ideas about it.
Well, I mean, look where we've gone, from $1,150,000 in '16, '17, down $850,000. I mean, that's been a good, steady.
Good study.
Decrease, not a shock to the system, but a meaningful reductions and certainly not increasing now, which is.
Right.
The direction we don't want to go.
No, no.
I just also want to make the statement that Tom referred to foundation aid, and that's been kind of a political football up in Albany over the last number of years, with foundation aid is supposed to be like your base aid regardless of how, what your expenses are, that's supposed to be your base aid. And just so you know, our foundation aid was a 0.7% increase. So, I mean, there were years way before, you know, back, you know, 10 years ago, where we were getting a lot more than 0.7, and 0.7 is not a lot. However, some of the higher need districts in our region, downstate, are getting significantly more than 0.7% increase there, and I won't name any districts in public, but I did talk with at least several superintendents in the mid-Hudson Valley who are superintendents of relatively small, fairly low need, certainly not high needs districts, and amazingly, their foundation aid increase was all 0.7%. So, I'm starting to kind of informally piece together the formula that somebody used up there to say, you know, these districts, they don't need much, we got to give them something, so what's the magic number? You know, 0.7 sounds about right, and I'm telling you, at least several districts right in this area got 0.7, so I don't think that was a coincidence. Just so you know, what we're getting in base operating aid, it's less than 1%.
There's actually nine categories. City, suburban, rural, average need, low need, high need, and they all get their percentage. So, if you're rural, low need, you get 0.7. You're a city, high need, you get 7, and that's how they do it. They do it by blocks, how we're classified. We're considered rural, low need. So, that's how they, that's how they do some of their formulas. Aid driven for foundation aid is driven by that reason. Here's one of the things, if they were rerunning it over again, we would lose money because our formula is wrong. And that would happen with a lot of districts, but they just go on. You're not going to get anything less than.
We're safe, harmless.
We're safe, harmless on that, but if they were to say, okay, we're going to throw it out the door and we're going to start all over again, I don't know if I'd want to do that at this point.
So, Joe, what kind of.
At this point, I wouldn't be lobbying for them to change that because it could be, you could end up in a worse position.
What kind of percentages were you seeing locally for sort of the mid-range need and the high need, just for perspective?
I wasn't, I was only talking with my colleagues who called me to complain.
Misery.
So, nobody that was getting 7% or 5% was calling me to complain.
Okay.
My colleagues who were getting 0.7% were calling me to say, can you believe that's all they were able to get? That's how, a lot of grumbling about how they didn't feel our local legislators were going to that for those districts. So, I have no idea what, you know, the Newburgs, the Poughkeepsies of the world were getting. I mean, we could probably.
We could find that.
Yeah, we could probably find out, but they weren't calling me up to complain.
Once we get the, all the formulas and everything, it will tell us plainly, right, how much you're getting.
Right.
For whatever, you know, any formula, they spell out what that formula is. And like I say, okay, city, school district, high need, that's what they did. Everybody got that across the state. New York City, the big five work a little different.
Well, and I, you know, I think the takeaway is that low need school districts like Reinbeck are putting more into the pot than they're getting back. I know, I'm not, I'm not saying that's, is or isn't right or fair, and you can make a case for the needier school districts should get a bigger part of the pie, but the pie is comprised of what the taxpayers in every school district are putting in, and I think without making a value judgment about it, we're probably putting in more than our fair share versus what we're getting back out of it in terms of aid. That's, that's, it's nothing new.
No.
That's nothing new. That didn't just happen this year or recently. I mean, it's been that way for a long time and across the state, it's not just Reinbeck either. But it is what it is.
There's a lot of business officials are getting upset about this because state aid is being treated as it always has been treated for the past three decades, but the one thing that's different is now the tax cap. That's what's now bound our hands together to say, you know, our community could probably afford it, but trying to go out there year after year to exceed it is, that's ludicrous. But what they are now is they're not treating us the same. We're all under the same rules of the tax cap. So, we should kind of be under the same type of rules that, that districts shouldn't be getting 7% while some get less than 1%. And this, and the tax cap, that's not fair. That's not fair. How much extra now has these big city school districts get? 10% this year between state aid and they're able to generate 2%, 3% in tax levy? That's a lot of extra money to be doing, while we're dealing with, all right, we're actually pretty high for our tax cap at 3.6, and that's because of capital project, but most of them are in the 2, 2.5 range. An extra 0.7, oh, wow, all right, I'm getting 3.5 to work with when some places are getting 9%, 10% to work with. So, it's now, people are now really starting to see this, well, wait a second, you're driving a lot of money towards the high needs, and we understand that, like Joe said, understand it, but we now start saying, this is getting to be a little unfair. Every year, you're driving all the extra aid that way. We're not getting our fair share of that anymore. Well, you know, overall, it might have been 4% across the entire state, but, all right, what do we see every year? Less than 1, less than 1, less than 1, less than 1. It's catching up.
Anyway, so that's where we're at on the revenue side, that that part of it's not a pretty picture, although could be worse, I guess, we could be getting less, but we're thankful for what we get and wish that they had the political will to level everybody up instead of robbing from Peter to take care of other needs. That are definitely there, and there's no two ways of that. So, anyway.
Anybody have any questions, any further? Steve?
Just thank you to Tom and Jeff for bringing all this together this year and every year, really, that this has been a much nicer process and smoother process to go through, including the workshop. I'm glad you mentioned a capital project as being the cause of just being over the 2% cap, because I think that that's important to understand as we go into the community. People ask us, what's 3.64, where'd that come from? So, it is basically the capital project that, because that's 1.4 million extra.
Yeah, 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 there's no doubt about it, you know, and this is to safeguard against next year going out with a 7% or 8% and still be within the tax cap, and that would have been just a shocker, and this was kind of to ease the pain going towards it. Plus, the extra revenues we're picking up now will help reduce our principal as we go out to borrow the money. So, that's also another help for us as we go forward with this. But you're right, that is, got to be an informational piece that people understand.
Job well done. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Tom.
We appreciate the feedback on the process because we did make some pretty significant changes in the timeline and the process, and, you know, you'll give us our marching orders next year as to whether we want to run the same, the process the same way and see whether this was a fluke or whether it just makes sense to do it the way we did it this year. So, thank you for bearing with us as we tried something new, and knock on wood, it came out all right.
I mean, I think it's, you know, double act story, I mean, it's stressful waiting, right? Because then you feel like you're in a rush and you're catching up, but on the other hand, you're working with better data when you get it instead of assumptions that may be completely wrong. be completely wrong. So, I think from a transparency standpoint, it was, was the best way to go.
Yeah, but thank you for the feedback.
I hope you were getting positive feedback from the administrators, too, and their ability to think more.
Yeah, no, they, yes, and they, they appreciated not having to do, like, in, you know, in the beginning of February, you got to cut this much, and, and you got to let us know by the end of the week, because we got to bring this to the board. I mean, they appreciated not being under that level of stress, too, so I think, I haven't heard a complaint yet within our organization. I think everybody's, of course, it didn't hurt that we weren't looking to cut a million dollars.
Yes.
Okay, but still, we were dealing, regardless, we're dealing with better numbers, and I think in a, in a, in a less, how do I want to say this? In, in a less positive year, I think there'll be fewer people freaking out sooner, because we don't know, and, no, we're not going to have to cut a million dollars from our budget, but at the end of the day, we wind up not having to cut anything, you know, the year before, but there was a lot of angst, and I understand that, and I, none of us wants that angst on the part of our state for our community, so I think this took some of the air out of that balloon. We'll see how it works next year.